In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required, indicating that this meeting would take place at the municipal building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, October 28, 2025.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation by Councilman Vasanella.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, just as for all.
As we, excuse me, if everybody could remain standing, please. As we gather here today as members of the Franklin Township Council, we pray that we are ever mindful of all opportunities to render our service to our fellow citizens and to our entire community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois.
Here.
Councilman Karazi.
Present.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Here.
Councilmember Potasnik. Deputy Mayor Udine.
Oh, wow.
Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Here.
So I finagled the agenda a little bit, and I, we have some visiting dignitaries, and completely out of protocol, I'm having Mr. La Court present them.
I'm Bob La Court, Chairman of the Franklin 250 Committee Forum to celebrate Franklin Township's role in the American Revolution, as we approach its 250th anniversary in 2026. Here's something truly special. Franklin Township has been recognized as one of the 60 Victory Towns and 200 nationally. That designation honors communities that played a vital role in the historic 700-mile march to Yorktown, and Franklin Township was right in the heart of it. Our 19, our committee of 19 members has been working tired, tirelessly to bring the legacy to life. I'd like to recognize each of them tonight, alphabetical order. Barbara Breckley, Jay Bird, Bill Carstatt, Nick DeBiglio, Brad Fay, Bill Grippo, Bob Hudak, Randy Jones, Chris Kelly, Mayor Phil Kramer, George Luck, Glenn McParland, Terry Sergio, Councilman James Vasanella, Jennifer Welch, employees who've been great, Isaiah Amiel, Stephen Dahl, Krista Hageness, Safi Clannan. As Franklin Day, the residents met George Washington, heard a fife and drum, watched Matthew Rispolo carry General Washington's flag, and if you posed with general, you walked away with your own copy of the Declaration of Independence. Today's Franklin 250 history was with a handshake. We also have commemorative coins designed to bring our, our own, that are unique to Franklin. Glenn McParland was the designer of those coins. The beautiful keepsakes that honor our local history, and they've already sparked excitement across the community. Starting this January, we'll host events every month leading up to the big anniversary. Each one is designed to, to be educational and interactive, and give residents a glimpse of the life of Franklin Township 250 years ago. You can find all the upcoming events and historical highlights on Franklin's page, on Franklin's 250 page on the township website. We invite everyone to join us, whether you're history buff or just curious about the past that shaped our present. Before I do, I'd like to introduce someone who's helped bring Franklin's revolutionary, revolutionary legacy to life, Brad Fay of Grickstown, the living historian and spark behind Franklin's march into America's 250. Brad has brought two special guests with him tonight, and I've been told if I say these words, open a door to the past, something special may happen. Brad's going to give something to, and read something to the council.
Thank you. Let me just begin by introducing Generals Washington and Rochambeau, portrayed by two local men who have been studying this for a very long time, and who bring a really authentic look and knowledge to the role. And it's particularly appropriate that they should be with me here today. And I just also want to acknowledge up on the screen there, we have a picture from Franklin Day where we really launched all of this, with some of the same reenactors, a great group of people that were there. It's the beginning of a very exciting year for a town like Franklin that has so many different connections to the American Revolution. And I'd like to, to start by focusing on the one that involves these two generals. I, I am regularly working with an organization called the Washington Rochambeau Revolutionary Root Association. It's a mouthful, so we abbreviate it by W3R. And today, we're presenting a letter to the council about the history of the trail that passes through Franklin Township. And I'd like to read that letter because I think it describes for you a really great moment in the history of Franklin Township. And if township manager wouldn't mind also clicking to the next picture, I'll, I'll show you the map as well. So the letter reads, Dear Mayor Kramer, the surrender of Lord Cornwallis to General George Washington and the Comte de Rochambeau at Yorktown on October 19, 1781, rang in the end of the American War of Independence. In the summer and fall of that year, thousands of American and French forces had walked, ridden, and sailed almost 700 miles along the eastern seaboard. In 2009, Congress designated the land and sea lanes through nine states from New England to Virginia, the Washington Rochambeau Revolutionary Root National Historic Trail. The hundreds of cities, towns, and hamlets they passed through, we call them Victory Towns, stretched from New England to Virginia, Continental Army and its French allies marched from Newport and Providence, Rhode Island, through Hartford, Connecticut, Trenton, New Jersey, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Wilmington, Delaware, Baltimore, and they marched through Franklin Township, earning the township the designation as a Victory Town, hoping that the capture of New York City, the center of British power at the time, Washington had concentrated Allied forces north of the city in July 1781. When a letter by French Admiral de Grasse brought news that he was sailing to the Chesapeake rather than to New York City, Washington on August 14 decided to deploy to Virginia. The need to keep the march hidden from British General Sir Henry Clinton, Washington ordered the construction of large ovens in Chatham to bake troop, bread for the troops, reinforcing the idea that a siege of New York City was underway. Yet during August 1781, the Allied armies crossed New Jersey toward Pennsylvania on several parallel routes, which you're seeing in the map up there, to assure access to food, water, straw, and firewood, as well as to hide the scale of troop movements. On August 28, the units of the Continental Army under Ben, General Benjamin Lincoln lay encamped at Springfield, the remainder under Colonel Lamb camped at Chatham. French forces lay further west at Whippany. On August 30, both American and French columns entered Franklin Township. Lincoln's units departed from their camp along the River Road and Raritan Landing and marched through Franklin Park to Kingston where they set up tents for the night. The next day, they marched on present-day Route 27 through Princeton to Trenton where they joined their comrades for a crossing of the Delaware River. French troops staying on the west bank of the Millstone River marched down River Road to Grickstown, where they crossed the river and marched on the east bank to Kingston. They recrossed the Millstone and marched on Route 27 through Princeton to their camp on the road at Trenton. By the evening of August 30, 1781, the Continental Army had marched through Franklin Township. By the evening of September 1, the French Army had passed through as well. The routes taken by the two armies that summer defined Franklin's eastern and western borders. And the reason I wanted to show that map is you look at the two, the American and French lines, and what you see is, you see Franklin, because it's following the, the outlines of, of the municipality. So it's kind of a cool way to think about this. As the United States prepares to recognize its 250th anniversary in 2026, the Victory Towns of the Washington Rochambeau Revolutionary Root have special reason to celebrate. During our founding era, they witnessed one of the great military maneuvers in American and world history, a march to victory that helped create an independent United States of America, the world's longest enduring democracy. Sincerely, Dr. Robert Seelig, trail historian and the real expert who knows every bit of this trail through our area as well. And I just want to present the letter.
Thank you. This is my shameless way of advertising for Franklin 250, several events coming up.
Very good.
Thank you.
Is there any interest in having a picture with these two fine gentlemen?
For one picture?
I think the mayor should get in there and take a picture.
Maybe in front of the council or something?
Oh, right in front of there. Looks a little similar. Not exactly.
Anyone who wants to get in the pictures, welcome.
Or anybody does.
We're all celebrating, 250.
Mr. Raynown is not going to?
I'm out of the way.
No attorneys?
Allowed.
Where's Bob La Court?
I'm John Bob La Court.
Oh.
Bob La Court.
You want to show that?
Come on, Bob.
Oh, wow.
Maybe our, maybe our distinguished guests can hold that right in front.
Okay, if, if the clerk could note that at seven, or at 12 after 7, the mayor lost control of the council meeting.
To General Washington.
All right.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing you all next year.
Generals, if you two could hang for one second, we're going to have a proclamation I think you'd be interested in. Any veteran, Johnny, Mr. Danielson, who wishes to stand with me as I read it, is welcome to come up. And generals, if you could stand by me.
Veterans, come on up. Stand with the mayor. Anyone else?
Anyone with, anyone who has a military person or a veteran in their family.
Come on down, Johnny.
Anyone who's got a son or a daughter in the military. Okay. Yes, you should stand. Anyone with a son or a daughter in the military. Okay. Thank you, Johnny. National Veterans and Military Families Month. Whereas the United States of America has been blessed with courageous men and women who have answered the call to serve in our armed forces, defending our freedoms and protecting our nation with honor, courage, and dedication. And whereas the state of New Jersey and the township of Franklin are proud to be the home to thousands of veterans and active-duty military personnel who have served in conflicts from World War II through Korean War, Vietnam War, Gulf War, and the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, as well as in peacetime service around the globe. And whereas the sacrifices made by our service members extend beyond the individual to encompass their families while providing unwavering support enduring extended separations and facing unique challenges where their loved ones serve our nation. And whereas military families demonstrate extraordinary strength and resilience, maintaining homes and communities while adapting to frequent relocations, deployment cycles, and the demands of military life. And whereas it is our solemn duty to grateful, to as a grateful nation and community, to honor the sacrifice and service of our veterans and to recognize the vital contributions and sacrifices made by military families. I, now therefore, I, Philip Kramer, Mayor of the Township of Franklin, Somerset County, on behalf of the Franklin Township Council, do hereby proclaim November 25 as National Veterans and Military Families Month in Franklin Township, and encourage all residents to honor our veterans and military families through acts of service, expressions of gratitude, and continued support for programs that assist them in our community. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So I'm here to present a proclamation to celebrate Hindu Heritage Month, which is, which falls on, in October throughout the world. So as you know, Hinduism originated in India. It's not really, it's a set of principles and practices. It's a very flexible religion, as you all know. India's one point off of, India's 1.4 billion, Hindus are about 80%, Muslims are about 14%. By the way, India is the third largest Muslim populated country in the world, after Vietnam, after Indonesia and Pakistan. There's a lot of diversity there, about 2, 2.5% Christians and Sikhs. So it's a very diverse country, secular country. So I'm here to celebrate, call the, read the proclamation with our good friend and senior Hindu leader from our own town, Mr. Sudani, Vimal Sudani. For those of, yes. For those of you who may not know Mr. Sudani and his family, very generous to the town and to the community, the gazebo we all enjoy every year in the summer especially, was made possible by the donation from the Sudani Foundation. We thank you very much for that. And he continues to donate to other good causes, including the food bank, the school system, Rutgers University, and several others. We plan to hit him hard for our O M C A soon. A little plug there for you, for our O M C A. But I'm pleased to invite Mr. Sudani here before I read the proclamation. And, and the family, please come over. Yeah, we'll take the photograph after the reading, yes. Come on over. So let me read the proclamation, and then I'll give you the mic, yes? Can you stand right here with the mayor? Whereas the Hindu faith is one of the world's oldest religions, with a rich history spanning thousands of years, and a profound tradition of philosophy, spirituality, and cultural contribution to humanity. And whereas Hindu Americans have been an integral part of the United States for over 150 years, contributing significantly to the fields of science, medicine, technology, education, business, arts, and public service, while enriching our nation with timeless concepts including yoga, meditation, and principles of nonviolence, truth, and respect for all living beings. And whereas Franklin Township is proud to be home to a vibrant and diverse Hindu community that enriches our township through their cultural traditions, values of peace, tolerance, and service, and active civic engagement. And whereas Hindu festivals such as Diwali, Holi, and Navratri celebrate the triumph of light over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance, values that resonate universally across all communities and strengthen the bonds that unite all residents. And whereas recognizing and celebrating Hindu Heritage Month provides an opportunity for all residents to learn about and appreciate the rich cultural heritage, traditions, and contributions of Hindu Americans to our township, our nation, and to the world. Now therefore, Philip Kramer, Mayor of Franklin Township, along with the councilman Ram Embarrasson and the entire Township Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Hindu Heritage Month in Franklin Township, Somerset County, New Jersey, and encourage all residents to join in recognizing the invaluable contributions of the Hindu community to our township and to celebrate the diversity that makes Franklin Township a stronger, more vibrant place to live. With the group, yeah, I think, yeah, here. You want to say a few words?
I will.
Yes.
And good evening to everyone. It is a great honor to join you all this evening to celebrate Hindu Heritage Month here in Franklin Township. First and foremost, I extend my heartfelt thanks to the Franklin Township management for the continued support and recognition of this important occasion. A special word of appreciation to Councilman-at-Large, Mr. Ram Embarrasson, for his kind invitation and for taking the initiative to organize the Hindu Heritage Month proclamation on behalf of all Hindus in our township. This year marks the fifth anniversary of Hindu Heritage Month, a moment of pride and reflection for our community. Hinduism is one of the world's most ancient living traditions, teaches us the noble principles of Vasudev Kuttumbhukam. It means the entire world is one family. This profound idea reminds us to live in harmony, respecting all beings, and embracing diversity with compassion. As we celebrate today, let us take moment to remember our roots, our rich cultural heritage, and the timeless values we brought from India, our Matra Bhumi and Karma Bhumi, which continues to guide us in our journey here in America. It is our collective responsibility to share these values with the next generation, so they too can carry forward our traditions with pride and understanding. Before I conclude, I would like everyone to please join me in giving a big round of applause to Councilman Ram Embarrasson, the Franklin Township leadership, and to all the participants who made this celebration possible. Thank you all, once again, for coming together to honor our shared heritage and for strengthening the bonds that unite our community. Thank you. Can we call our friends to have a photograph? Please join us.
Yeah, join us.
Please. Our township, yeah, please come, township, our Abhiswad Pur, other Hindu organization also there, yeah. Yeah. Come on, come on in. Yes, yes.
Do you want to stand here?
Yeah, we can do that. Definitely, yeah. Come on. Please. Please join us. All of, all of us.
Hold up one second. I think you missed this young lady, right back here. Move up in the front. No, 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 put her in the front. She's hitting in the back. All right, put her in the front. There you go.
Thank you. Good guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
White angle lens.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
If you're poor.
Oh, you have to, oh.
I was trying to see you get on there. I was trying to, couldn't even hear anything.
Yeah, I know. I was trying to see you. I couldn't see you.
Events.
Revolutionary theme.
Why is it getting here?
George Washington.
If you're leaving, please go. I know of no other way to say it. Please enjoy our lobby.
Please enjoy our lobby.
That's commendations and proclamations, item number seven, upcoming events. The only event I know of, or not I know of, but a big one of great importance is Tuesday, November 4, vote. Anyone, other council members have an event announcement?
Restaurant week is coming next week, November 2 through the 8. Do I need, do you have anything else to say about it?
No, I was gonna say, it's on our website and the information, and restaurants will be posted, I believe, either tomorrow or Thursday for those participating. And just check the website, and it runs all week, and there'll be discounts available at all of the locations. Safi was working hard at it today to try to get everything up and posted by tomorrow.
Okay.
I wanted to make one announcement about the Northeast Supply Enhancement Project, which is the Williams Transco Pipeline and Compressor Station 206. There is an air quality permit hearing that the New Jersey D E P is doing on Thursday, November 13, from 5:30 PM to 9:30 PM. If you're interested in registering, information is available on the Franklin Township website. If you visit the N E S I Compressor Station Task Force page, and then you scroll down to the news section, you can click on the hearing and register for that. They'll do it first come, first served by registration, and I think it's limited to about three minutes. The previous water quality permit, they ran out of time, and everyone spoke opposed. Not one person spoke in favor. So we know this is not only wrong for our community, but we need to make sure that the Department of Environmental Protection knows that we're opposed and for reasons that they can reject the permit. And this is for air quality, two of the 16,000 horsepower compressors running on that fracked natural gas and the pollution from it. So that, that's happening, and I want to make folks aware. Members of council did testify previously opposed. If you're interested in attending, make sure you register as well and indicate that you're a member of council, so that you could hopefully go earlier in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We are now to item number eight, public discussion. I ask for unanimous consent to open to the public. Seeing no objections, we are open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter related to government may do so. You have five minutes. No yielding of time, may only come up once.
Yeah. Otherwise, no one will hear you.
We'd like to be heard. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the town.
the news section, you can click on the hearing and register for that. They'll do it first come, first served by registration, and I think it's limited to about three minutes. The previous water quality permit, they ran out of time, and everyone spoke opposed. Not one person spoke in favor. So we know this is not only wrong for our community, but we need to make sure that the Department of Environmental Protection knows that we're opposed and for reasons that they can reject the permit, and this is for air quality, two of the 16,000 horsepower compressors running on that fracked natural gas and the pollution from it. So that's happening, and I want to make folks aware. Members of council did testify previously opposed. If you're interested in attending, make sure you register as well and indicate that you're a member of council, so that you could hopefully go earlier in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we are now to item number eight, public discussion. I ask for unanimous consent to open to the public. Seeing no objections, we are open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter related to government may do so. You have five minutes. No yielding of time, may only come up once.
Yeah. Otherwise, no one will hear you.
Well, we'd like to be heard. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the township and the council for allowing or sponsoring the No Kings Act. It was a great day.
So that was, I just want to correct you, that was not sponsored by the township.
I wasn't sure, that's why I said, I wasn't sure what. Nevertheless, allowing it to occur, it was an important day, a great day, and I also have to give kudos to the police, who I think did a terrific job that day. So I wanted to get that on the record. The second thing is-
Your name and address.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Norman Roberts, 15 Benjamin Street, Somerset, New Jersey. The second thing is, I would like to get an update on the litigation regarding the updated nuisance ordinance and the hearing that was held by Judge Menon several weeks ago, and I'd like to know if the town, in the event that the ordinance is ruled against by the judge, whether the town is prepared to appeal it in whole, or if part of it is struck down, such as the hours of operation and noise, what the position of the town will be in that situation? And that is my question. Four minutes left.
Okay, thank you. I forgot to add, please state your name and address. Thank you, Mr., Dr. Karazi, for correcting me. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name is Eugene Waltz. I'm a resident of Franklin Township since 1972. My question is in reference to school taxes. My youngest son is 55 years old, and my question is, why am I paying school taxes? And I know a lot of other homeowners in the township are asking the same question, and I would like someone up there to give me an idea of why we're paying homeowners taxes and we don't have children in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? We answer all the questions afterwards.
Oh, okay. I'm fine with that.
Good. Thank you.
Jan Brant, 22 Bryant Court. First, I want to thank Mr. Vornlocker and Vince Dominic. Recently, when I've had questions that I've had to, like, reach out and ask them, they've gotten back to me quickly and been quite courteous and always have lots of information for me. So Vince isn't here, but thank you, Mr. Vornlocker, for all the help you-
He's probably listening.
Okay, thanks, Vince. Second, wanted to state that I know I had some recent messaging with the mayor, who I consider a friend, and there was something that was published in the Franklin Report. I was just talking to Mr. Bowman, he said to, you know, that I could submit a correction and all, but I was upset because something was taken totally out of context, and I have it right here, and even more upset because it's caused me some hurt, and now Ms. Uden has posted it on her Facebook page, so I'm glad she's present so she could hear, because I'm sure if she realizes the inaccuracies of it, maybe she'll take it off her Facebook page. But Ms. Dina Lux had posted something, her opinion on the page, and one of the things that she said is that, she quoted me as saying, "I'm not against warehouses," but she gave me credit for Seawag and all, and that's totally taken out of context, because anytime I've said, "I'm not against warehouses," and you all up here could probably verify it as well. So Ms. Uden posting this, knowing that this is a lie, "I'm against warehouses when they're put next to residential areas," and everybody knows that. So just putting an article as an op-ed and saying that Jan Brant isn't against warehouses is defamation. I also want to say that she said that I stood with the mayor in support. Yes, the mayor's a friend of mine, and I supported him the last election, and municipal government is really about the person, really not about the party. And yes, I did take a picture with him on my backyard, and he is my friend, and before I planned on running, I actually met with him and sat down with him. So I just want you all to know that. So if somebody's trying to defame me by saying that I stood with the mayor and I was in support of the mayor, that I totally agree with. That's not a lie. But she posted that, it's gonna be a bad thing. But I don't like that she puts, like, a spin on something that really isn't true about me. So I will publish something, send something to Mr. Bowman, but I don't appreciate when people put it on their Facebook page and could get the wrong idea about what I stand for and what I'm about. And I really totally believe that municipal government, we all want the same thing, and one of the things that I, when I met with the mayor, I said, "I'll work with everybody." That I want what's good for the community, and the only reason why I'm running against you, Ms. Uden, is because I think I could do a better job. I'm not gonna say anything bad about you. You're a nice person, we were friends too. I just think I could do a better job for the community, and that's what I'm running against you. So I really, I've tried to run a campaign, but I'm not saying anything negative about anybody, I'm not, you know, trying to put people's words differently. I'm really trying to run a positive thing about what I can do for government. So I just want to say that, but thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Robin Sedam, 54, Skilman's Lane. Just a question, if I want to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance about fossil fuels, do I do this now, or will there be a separate comment?
So you can speak about anything to do with government now, but there is a separate portion for that.
I'll wait for that.
Okay. Did I handle that legally correctly?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm a student of Rutgers University, and I'm here on an assignment, if any of you're wondering.
Name and address, and you need to get really close to the microphone.
My name is Massimo Lenge. I live at the Harrison apartment, 575 East Nav, apartment 59, if anyone, you know, wants to stop by. So my question is, with the ordinance regarding the generators, how will compliance for this new ordinance be checked? Will it be checked through complaints, inspections, or some other process? That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's John Stone, I'm a Rutgers student here as well, and my name is John Stone. I live at 510 Hamilton Street, Somerset, New Jersey, and my question is, will the township share clear timelines and notices before roadwork starts? Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else come forward, I ask for unanimous consent to close the public portion. Hearing no objection, public portion is closed. Time to address the public comments. The nuisance ordinance, do you have any update?
I don't, and, you know, obviously, if there's a court decision, whatever it is, we'll talk to the council about it. I think council, to date, has been committed to the ordinance and filing an appeal. Should there be an adversary?
School taxes, I'm happy to answer that. So I don't have children, I've never had children, I frankly didn't want children. I proudly pay my school taxes because it's good for society. We need to fund our schools, and I always think when someone comes up and says, "My kids are out of school, why am I paying?" When your kids were in school, did you say, "The older people shouldn't have to pay for my kids?" I mean, that doesn't come up, and I'm not trying to embarrass you, I'm just saying that's the irony. So when I go to a doctor, when I go to a lawyer, when I go to the guy serving my food at a deli, I want them to be educated, I want them to know about germs and washing their hands and all those kinds of things. So society is better with our schools, and people would not be able to pay for our children to go to schools if it was relegated to just a few. That said, and I've said this many times, property taxes are a stupid way to pay for schools. It should be done by a means tax, the more money you have available to pay, then you should pay more, and as people know, I'm a doctor, I probably would have to pay more. Assemblyman Danielson is here. We had a news press conference just last week about pushing the legislation, or actually he wanted to study, to end property taxes for schools. It's just, it's the wrong way to do it, but for now, if that's what we're gonna do, then everyone's gotta pay. But, I mean, I'm half agreeing with you and half disagreeing with you. We need to change the way we pay for our schools. I hope that answers your question. Ms. Brant, thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to quickly mention with taxes, because the window, I think, is closing. Right now, there is a great program in the state, assuming it's funded every year, or will be even greater. For those people 65 and older that believe make under $400,000 is a pretty high threshold, it could be lowered in the future, but the point is, if you fail out of paperwork by August 31st, you are likely, likely to, October 31st, you are likely to get a 50% reduction in your property taxes, up to $6,500. Still not sure why more of that, which is the best way right now, until more is done, perhaps through what the mayor was talking about, to relieve the tax burden for seniors, especially seniors that have reasonable amount of money that contributed back into the economy. So for what it's worth, that is a really big program. You could say, you have $13,000 property taxes and you qualify, it will be reduced to 6,500, assuming it keeps getting funded by the state legislature each year. But the window is closing, October 31st, and really, spread the word to people, I still find, you know, there's the anchor program, all that other stuff, this can very well yield you thousands of dollars on top of whatever senior discounts freezes, et cetera, you're getting. So that's something that I think is great. The mayor, what the mayor was talking about, will even be better long term, but we want seniors to stay in New Jersey, of a pretty wide range of economic means, because that does fuel the economy. Thank you.
Thank you. The generator, the question about the generator ordinance will be answered when we get to that, which won't be very long from now. There was a question about roadwork.
So I'd love to know, and we can talk about it later, what class you're taking at Rutgers for that question, perhaps in the engineering department, but in Franklin Township, all roadwork is listed for paving purposes on our website. In addition, we utilize the NICSIL system to alert motorists that, of impending roadwork, whether it be planned roadwork or emergency roadwork. So those are the two primary methods to get information out. The website is also, will trigger emails for those people who sign up for email alerts, so you can get NICSIL by text or email. You also get emails from the website whenever entries are made. It's on the homepage of our website for upcoming street paving projects, and as they go on, the alerts go out. And you're gonna wait and talk about how we're going to enforce that ordinance when we speak about that ordinance?
When we speak about that ordinance.
Okay.
Bob, we also do often put out good old-fashioned paper signs, right?
Well, if you live in a neighborhood where we're going to be doing something and we have no parking on the street, then there'll be no parking signs posted by the police department, but generally speaking, roadwork gets announced via our alert system, NICSIL, and our website.
And about two weeks ago, I asked Mr. Vornlocker, "Why are there so many accidents? I'm getting so many more NICSILs." They're just being more diligent about sending out the NICSILs.
It's funny, you know, so, and I'm gonna just add to that. So one of the most frequent complaints that we receive about our police department, and we don't receive many complaints about our police department, we're very proud of them, is that they don't utilize the NICSIL system enough to get notices out when roads are temporarily closed for a crash, or, you know, that type of notification. So over the last couple months, we've had several conversations about, you know, getting those NICSILs out more often, and the mayor did say, you know, "Boy, it seems like we're having a lot more crash." We're actually having less this year than we did last year, it's just that we've been telling you about them more often, so that makes it sound like we're having more. We're really not having more, but yes, more NICSILs.
All right. Oh, and Ms. Brant, I completely understand embarrassment about having a picture taken with the mayor. Okay.
I just, can I add something else to that?
Yes.
Okay, just want to add, we, there's many op-eds that are written right now in the news, and I share many things on my public page, and many residents that are here have been reaching out to me about a couple of things, so I hope you guys get in your answers as quickly as I can get to. Ms. Brant, I'm still your councilperson, you can still reach out to me when you have questions, and we have done brainstorming in the past, you can continue to call me. I'm not sure, you know, if there's something specific that you wanted to talk about, still very accessible, have been, and will continue to be, so, you know, feel free to reach out to me if you have any specific questions. Thank you.
One last thing, Mr. Danielson, you wanted to announce that you're having a veterans' breakfast. When is it?
Every year, I host a free breakfast for any veterans in Franklin Township and the surrounding area. This year, the veterans' breakfast will be held on November 10th at 9:00 AM at the Stage House. So any veteran who can attend, can attend, are welcome, and it's free, and you'll be surrounded by many other veterans, it's a good time, get to tell stories and see friends and neighbors, commemorate your service to our country. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
If you do want to attend, we do ask that you call my office to let us know you're gonna be there, so we can plan accordingly, but it's not required, it's just appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Assemblyman Joe Danielson.
Honorable.
It's time now for council comments. Let's start with Dr. Karazi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone.
Yep.
You know, this past few months, we've heard so much about taxes, and so let me first extend a heartfelt appreciation to Assemblyman Joe Danielson for his leadership for introducing legislation to create School Finance Reform Commission to ease school tax burden on taxpayers. I also want to thank Mayor and my council colleagues for their full support of this initiative.
All right, we'll wait till you-
My fellow community members, the bold effort by Assemblyman Joe Danielson will not be easy to accomplish. However, if we all support him, ask our elected official to support this legislation, we hopefully see fundamental changes to ease this burden of higher school taxes for a great majority of community members. Thank you so much, Joe, really appreciate it. A couple of other things during the Human Relations Commission meeting that we had, of course, we had Bob LaCorte, who spoke, everybody heard a few minutes ago, and he gave us a kind of a high-level detail of a great event that's gonna be coming up next year, so I hope everybody will go to those events and enjoy. And we have our advisory board meeting on November 5th at 7:30 PM across the hall. Our guest speaker will be Sharon Clark, Executive Director of Central Jersey Housing Resource Center. She will address housing options for housing insecure and unhoused persons in Franklin and Central Jersey. So please come, again, start at 7:30, and if you're interested to hear some great presentation by her. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Oni Jaka.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We're about, we're about to-
We're about, we're about to start, we've already started voting this time. And please, I want, I want everybody to go out and vote. It's your civic rights. Go out and vote. And remember, on the 4th of November, is the voting day, the fully voting day. Go out and exercise your vote. That is one. Two is, we're about to enter Halloween period. It's time that we be very careful with our kids, most especially in some of these neighborhoods. Mayor, that is what I have.
Thank you, Councilman Embarrasson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, there was a City MD Urgent Care Center that opened up on Route 27, on the 20, on Route 27. So I was there for the grand opening. It's a great place, good location, full service facility. We welcomed them to town. And there was, I think, the same press event we attended by Assemblyman Joe Danielson, right here. And then Trunk a Treat on the 25th at the St. John's Plaza. It was a great event. Many kids came over. Food Bank had a trunk open, not a trunk, I guess, a table. So it was a wonderful event to see all the families and the kids enjoying the treats, rather. And then we had a meeting today with the Food Bank. They did a poetry contest this year, early this year, and I was a judge. Not that I'm a poet or anything like that. But we talked, this is for the Franklin schools, all the three, the primary, middle school, and then the high school. There were hundreds of students that got, that sent in their work. And the final finale was held at the Villages Theater. And everybody got a prize, cash prize. And we talked about today continuing that in the future with some improvements. That was a great initiative. Hats off to your group. Among all the other things that you are doing, that is a fantastic project, encouraging our kids to not only be, become aware of fight against hunger, also promote their literary activities in the school system. So that's a great job. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Francois.
I was, I was at the Trunk a Treat with Councilman Ron Embarrasson. And he also accompanied me at the Halloween party over at the youth center, which is very well attended. So the kids had a good time. And I hope on Halloween, the kids are going to be safe. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to mix it up here and go right to Councilman Wright.
Brought up the Trunk a Treat at John's Plaza. I just want to give the shout out to the Hamilton Business District, once again, for helping to put that together. It seems like the one line that always gets it is when they go through the bus and they see the gadgets that they have there. That's usually the longest line at the event. Again, the Franklin Food Bank was there. For anybody that wanted to come take home some goodies, they had it for you. And another thing that, at this point, you should always support the Franklin Food Bank. They do a marvelous job. For those that are in need, they come through in a big way. And he's sitting in the back right now. They come through in a big way, and you ought to thank them for what they do. Also, Councilman Vasinella and I, we were just going back and forth over something that was completed. And that was our beautiful sidewalks on Highland Avenue in Franklin Boulevard. Drive by and see your tax dollars at work, because it's a good deal. It allows our children to walk to school safely. And it's an ongoing process, so it's not a one-shot deal. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilmember Pataznik.
I have no comments. Thank you.
My favorite councilman. Councilman Vasinella.
Hey, Mayor, I don't know. I thought always your favorite councilman. Anyway, I'm going to guess it's public administration or political science that these guys back here are involved with. You're going to have to wait to the end of the meeting now to get your answer, question answered. But thank you for choosing Franklin. I believe both of you live in Franklin during your college tenure here on Hamilton Street. So thank you, and bring some good energy to that area. Hope you're enjoying that. Real quick, it is, well, deer season. Every season's deer season, but this is the real deer season, where the accidents, the presence of deer crank up quite, quite a bit. And the unfortunate accidents also seem to increase. There's a lot of dead deer. When I'm done, when the moment, or when, actually, at the end, when the manager makes some comments, I'm going to ask him just to give the quick 30-second instruction of what to do if you see a dead deer. But the first thing to do is be extremely careful, because it's just that time of year, whereas problematic situation in the state, and admittedly, in Franklin, its nature gets a lot worse. So be careful. The main meeting, I'm just going to mention, well, we had a public safety meeting, not a real lot to report there. Thank you for our acting police director, keeping, a public safety director, I'm sorry, keeping us updated on the issues that we want to keep updated on. And know Franklin is, is, is being a safe community. So the one meeting I wanted to mention, though, in a little more detail, Shetree, the Shetree Commission. First of all, there's an article in the Franklin Times. They usually have one every time the Franklin Times gets printed. A real interest in information. Assuming you have any trees in your yard or ever come across a tree, it's always helpful information. But the one thing we did, that did come out of the meeting is the, I'm going to call Franklin's first mini reforestation project that hopefully will be happening. They approved the basic proposal. And now, working with the manager in due time here, in the next couple of months, hopefully, we'll have a bid go out for that project. That's been through the Open Space Committee. And we, a lot of work put in by the Shetree Commission. And I'm not going to name names, but I want to thank the subcommittee that worked so diligently on it. And we'll keep you informed. Hopefully, that project will move forward, and we'll see shovels in the ground literally come next spring, perhaps. Other than that, thanks for Bob LaCorte and the, whatever, Washington, and I forget the other general's name.
Rashambo.
Rashambo, I know, cool sounding name. But seriously, we are, a lot of people say we're the crossroads of New Jersey. Well, we're also kind of a fork in the road with the American Revolution. For those who saw that presentation earlier, please read up on it. I did not know the extensive history of Franklin's importance to the revolution, which all of us here, and everybody in this township, is here because of, obviously, what came from that fight for freedom. And I'll leave it with that, Mayor. Thank you. And happy Halloween, happy and safe and fun Halloween.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Udine.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Happy Diwali. Diwali just passed, and Halloween is coming up, so happy Halloween. I had a couple of residents from the adult committees reach out regarding the lithium battery safety. And we had addressed that a couple of council meetings ago with the Fire Prevention Week here. And, and just want to repeat some of the stuff that our fire prevention team mentioned about the lithium battery safety. We always say, when choosing power devices, specifically lithium, make sure you're choosing certified products, not a third party. This goes for your bikes, e-bikes, scooters, I think, even the cars. Has that, cell phones, laptops, et cetera. Handle lithium battery powered devices with care. Follow the manufacturer instructions. Do not overcharge batteries. Sometimes we have a habit of leaving them overnight. So be careful, that's some of the things that start fires. And always stay alert for warning signals and signs. And one thing that I learned new a couple of weeks ago from our fire prevention is that you're able to recycle devices and batteries properly. Some known retailers like Best Buy takes device, batteries and devices for safety. So want to make sure that we address that again. It seems like there's been some ongoing third-party concerns on batteries that are for the adult committees. So I hope I address that for all the folks. And we did circulate a flyer to the HOAs, so that will go out as well, so that folks that have purchased batteries can disregard them and get the real manufacturer battery. So that's all I had. I'm actually glad you mentioned about the deer season. I got a couple of calls around reporting the deer is on the Mott Lane, which I'm sure Bob will address those. But thank you for mentioning that. And that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. For my comments, once again, vote November 4th or on every day, except Monday, between now and then, from 8 to, from 10:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the evening, except on Sunday, from 10:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night, I believe. And then, my wife and I have spent an enormous amount of time vacationing in Jamaica, so my heart goes out for that island now. Right this second is being pummeled. Godspeed. Okay, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I honeymooned in Montego Bay, Jamaica, a long, long time ago. And I looked at pictures today. There's, there's some live feeds coming out of Montego Bay, because the hurricane shifted a little bit to the west. And it's kind of took a, took a direct hit on the grill in, in Montego Bay. Very, very disturbing. My heart as well goes out. I remember very vividly how nice the people were in that country. And a beautiful country and beautiful people. And I, my heart hurts. But I will move on to my report. Just quickly, it must seem that is a theme today about our military and our troops. Our recreation department is collecting for our active-duty troops through December 13th. There is an organization called, as I scroll, Operation Jersey Cares, support our troops. It's a nonprofit that, that collects personal care items and food items to be shipped overseas to our active-duty troops. We are currently collecting at the Community Senior Center through December 12th. There's a list of different items that are commonly requested by our active-duty troops who are overseas. If you are interested in doing that, I would encourage you to just go to our website, click on the link for the list of items that are shipped over. Everything from Advil to devil dogs, right? So, you know, they like treats too. Lip balm, Q-tips, deodorant, coffee creamer, candy gum, Slim Jims, things that, that are not generally supplied by our military overseas when they are on active duty. And so that is one thing that you can do, leading up to Christmas and the holiday season. The other thing is, and there's also unfortunately lately, this type of theme. And that is, we are now participating here in Franklin Township in the NJ Shares Municipal Customer Assistance Program. This is funded by a nonprofit organization. It is a statewide initiative designed to help income-qualified households who are facing temporary financial hardship to pay their utility bills. They can receive up to $200 for electric, water, and sewer bills, so for a total of $600. It is unfortunately, right now, a one-time only, not monthly, but one-time only. But again, being funded by a nonprofit, you, if you live here in Franklin and are having difficulty in paying your water, electric, or sewer bills, and you meet those income requirements, and there are different requirements for seniors as opposed to non-seniors. All of the information is on our website, and you can submit an application through our website to receive that, and it's grant funding. So it's just some, some way to assist our residents who are, have fallen on hardship financially. And that's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Now for...
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't address the deer. I'm sorry. So if you see a deer on the side of the road, dead, that had been struck by a vehicle, and you're unsure whether it's been reported, the agency you report it to is the police department. Some people sometimes think animal control. It's not animal control. On township roads, the township is responsible for removal. On county roads, the county is responsible for removal. And on state roads, the New Jersey Department of Transportation. And for the, for the county and the township, we contract with a removal company. To kind of go along with what the councilman said and what the councilwoman said, for those of you who hunt deer, you'll know that this is the rut, right? That means they're, they're looking for girlfriends. And they're moving around quite actively, especially at night. This is the highest number, this is the season for the highest number of car crashes with deer throughout the calendar year. So there are a lot of deer being struck throughout the state. There is one company in the state of New Jersey who does deer disposal. So they're busy right now. And sometimes they don't get to the deer in that generally required 24-hour period. If you see it there, call the main number for the police department. That's the 2300 number. A dispatcher will answer the phone. They'll send a police officer to verify its location. And then it gets reported to the deer removal company. If it's our street, if it's the county road, then we send that notification to the county road department, and they notify the deer removal company. We do pay for it. So that's why, you know, the county's responsible for their roads, the state's responsible for theirs, and we're responsible for ours. But you have to call the police department. And if it's not gone, and I'm going to make this call, if it's not gone in 48 hours, call the police department again. And then they'll report it to the, to the appropriate company again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So item number 12, council discussion items. Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP. Mr. Smith? So this may be the most important agenda item. You can sit at the table, if you'd like, take the microphone. So we pride ourselves on our diversity in Franklin. And one of our diversities is economics. And this may be the most important agenda item we've had since I've been on council. So, Mr. Smith?
Mayor, for those who don't know, Mr. Smith is the executive director now of our very busy and successful food bank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see all of you. My name is Derek Smith, Executive Director of the Franklin Food Bank. Residents of Franklin Township and members of the council, we're facing an imminent humanitarian crisis. On November 1st, 2025, SNAP benefits are expected to not arrive for thousands of families. This is a guaranteed disruption to their primary food source. The impact is highly concentrated right here in Franklin. Of the 11,480 SNAP-receiving families in Somerset County, 3,603 of them, that's over 30%, reside right here in Franklin Township. So again, 30% of the SNAP-eligible households in Somerset County reside here in Franklin Township. At the food bank, our current capacity is built to serve approximately 100 to 120 families every day. We distribute about 3.5 million pounds of food annually. We are now preparing for a surge of families in need that could be two to three times what we serve now. If any of you have been by the Franklin Food Bank, it is a beautiful building. And we are bursting at the seams. When I first started working at the Franklin Food Bank in March... When I first started working at the Franklin Food Bank in March of 2022, we were seeing on average about 30 families a day. Now we see about 100 to 120 families, and we're doing our very best to meet the needs of those families. This Saturday, we could see upwards of 200 to 300 families a day. This emergency converges with other extremely difficult, extremely real issues. Cost of living increases since 2019, groceries are up 32%, housing is up 50%, childcare is up 50%, and healthcare costs are expected to increase dramatically, up to possibly four times what folks are paying right now. Additionally, there are federal furloughs, terminations from the government sector, and the private sector's downsizing on a monthly basis. We are down about 35% food donations from the Department of Agriculture. 35% decrease in food donations from the Department of Agriculture, and yet, we're up about 35% neighbors knocking on our doors, asking for access to healthy, nutritious, and culturally relevant food. The resulting demand will immediately overwhelm existing emergency food resources. The Franklin Food Bank is honored to serve, and we are mobilizing every resource to navigate this. We're poised to tackle this, but we need partners to make this plan viable. We're pulling key operational levers and discussing at the leadership level what other levels, levers we may want to pull later, based on what the data tells us. So here are some of the things that we're doing. We're aggressively pursuing new retail partnerships to secure more food to support the growing need. As it stands now, we have partnerships with over 35 local grocery stores in and around Somerset and Middlesex, and we're looking to increase that number. We are targeting food drives with houses of worship, corporations, Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, and community-based organizations. We're also partnering with organizations that are partnering themselves with university dining halls, local restaurants, and corporations for unused prepared food to increase ready-to-eat We at the Franklin Food Bank operate with an appointment-based model in our pantry. If you can imagine, to try to meet the existing needs that we see each and every day, we try our best to serve six or seven families every 15 minutes in the food bank. When's the last time you went grocery shopping and spent 15 minutes grocery shopping? We are looking to increase it to eight or nine families every 15 minutes to try to meet the growing need. We've been in constant communication with folks at the county, folks at the state, including the Office of Food Security Advocate. They are all active participants and contributors to this effort, and they're partnering with us on solutions, which include dusting off some of the pandemic strategies of countywide drive-through distribution locations. These are all being considered pending this looming crisis that we're facing as a county, as a state, and as a country. Some of the additional supports that we have at the Franklin Food Bank currently, as we all know, if you're food insecure, there's a strong chance that you're probably also struggling with other services that you are entitled to as a human on earth. From housing, to healthcare, to transportation, to employment, through partnerships that we have with health clinics and hospitals, community-based organizations and others, we provide those services now to residents here in Franklin Township. And we're going to increase their presence at 224 Churchill Avenue, where our pantry lives, because we know that there will be many individuals and families that will need the additional support once we face this crisis. We are also looking to increase the amount of volunteers that we have at the food bank to match the increased numbers of neighbors that will be showing up at our doorstep to shop for food. As I mentioned, we've been in contact with elected officials, folks at the county office, folks here in the school district, houses of worship, and the grocery stores. Folks, if you can imagine, there are going to be families showing up at the grocery store on November 1st that did not hear about the cuts to SNAP benefits. So what happens when Mr. Smith just filled up his cart with delicious food for his family? And Mr. Smith's two children are walking alongside him when he walks up to the cashier to check out. Mr. Smith pulls out his EBT card, which he's used many times, and it worked each time. What happens November 1st if that card doesn't work? How does Mr. Smith feel? How do those children feel? How does the cashier feel? So in addition to the advocacy work that we have done at the elected official level, we've also reached out to grocery stores, NJ Food Council, and others to make sure that there is a communication plan in place so that families and individuals in and around Franklin Township are in the know. If we want to ensure that our residents have an opportunity to shop for food in an atmosphere of dignity and respect, these are the kinds of things that we have to do. So this is a call to action. We require immediate coordinated action from this council and from this community. Our current structure at the Franklin Food Bank allows us to bend, but without your collective support, we may break under the weight of this impending crisis, which is a crisis that is human-made. Food insecurity is not an issue about lack of food. It's not an issue about lack of money. It's about what are the things that we are prioritizing as a society? What are the things that we believe to be true as a human right for all people in this country, regardless of their status? As a community, we are inviting you, we're asking you, to think about ways that you and people that you know can volunteer at the Franklin Food Bank. We're asking you to work with family and friends, houses of worship, other organizations to run food drives, to be able to help the Franklin Food Bank and others provide healthy, nutritious, and culturally relevant food to residents in Franklin Township that are in need. We're asking you to increase the awareness that is required for people in this community to know what resources are available and how to access those resources. And we're asking you to reach out to elected officials at the municipal, county, state, and federal levels, because the people's voices need to be heard. Council, you continue to support the Franklin Food Bank. As a collective body and as individuals, you are always on the front lines with us. I see many of you out there supporting the work that we do, and we are supremely grateful for that. And we need some additional support. If there are funds available, flexible emergency funds that can be granted to the Franklin Food Bank to help us with mass food procurement, purchasing the bulk food needs to serve the over 3,600 families that will fall over this cliff if SNAP benefits are frozen in What I'm speaking to is an immediate need. But as I mentioned earlier, even if this SNAP crisis was not in front of us, the growing numbers of folks in our town that are food insecure requires this community to continue to support us, this council to continue to support us, so that way we can meet the need. The increases that I talked about at the beginning of this presentation, from groceries to housing to childcare, all above 30%, I don't know anyone's salary that's gone up 30% in three years. The gap is widening, the need is increasing, and we have to come together as a community as we have before. Franklin Food Bank has been here for 50 years. It would be really sad if we need to be around for another 50 years. But we will be here as long as the need is there. We are extremely grateful for how this community has supported us over the years. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say, folks, we have a serious crisis in front of us connected to SNAP that could be starting as early as November 1st. There's a potential for WIC cuts November 10th. We all know what's happening with Medicare and Medicaid and Social Security, and there are many other programs that are benefiting our residents right here in Franklin Township that are on the chopping block. We see it every day on the front lines at the Franklin Food Bank. We feel blessed and privileged to be able to serve this community, and we're willing to bend, but we can't break. If we break, this community will truly be in peril. Please continue to support us, and I ask you to find an opportunity to support us even more than you have before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to help the food bank, because I think it's a worthy effort. And as he says, this council and this town has always been supportive, and I want to make this announcement on behalf of Franklin Township, the amount of $10,000 from the American Rescue Plan to the Franklin Township Food Bank. Motion?
I'll take that as a motion.
Second that motion.
I think all of council fell over their microphones trying to second.
I got there first.
Any discussion?
Can I just first say thank you?
No, not until we vote yes.
I was about to say, I don't have the check, so, you know, I can't give it to you right now.
So one discussion is, Mr. Manager, where did this money come from?
So as you will all remember, as we came out of the pandemic and there was some financial difficulties throughout the country, the Biden administration and Congress passed the American Rescue Plan and funded a number of different municipalities throughout the country. We were one of them. Counties were also funded, and states were funded. We utilized those Rescue Plan funds for a wide variety of projects, including the Zoo Fall Health Clinic, which will be coming online to serve the uninsured and underinsured members of our school district. That facility is on the site of the middle school, the Hamilton Street campus, and throughout with both CARES Act and Rescue Plan funds, we've tried to utilize those funds for projects that would benefit all of Franklin Township. We are at the very end of those American Rescue Plan funds. In fact, Councilman Wright had asked, you know, what was the amount of funds we have left? This is literally the last of the American Rescue Plan funds that we have, and Councilman Wright said, I can think of no good use for that other than this, and that's why he recommended what he just recommended, and I couldn't agree more. I think that it's a fitting way for us to expend all of those funds that ironically we received from the federal government, who is now cutting us off, right? I think there is a certain amount of irony in all of that, so I think it's certainly $10,000 well spent right now. So that's where it comes from, Mr. Mayor.
So do we do this by roll call?
Can I make a comment? Just, are we still in discussion?
Go ahead.
First of all, Derek, I want to thank you for your leadership. Clearly, we need your leadership in Washington and folks to come together, because it's so disheartening to know that families are going to not be able to eat and survive in a country as wonderful as America because of political disruption and childishness and the inability to put people over politics. And I think it's nice that this council has the ability to step up in a limited way, but, you know, it's a significant vacuum that's being left on this issue that hits right at home, but on so many others. And it's just really heartbreaking as we come up to this deadline. You know, I think all of us are going to need to do more, but also find a way in our civic responsibility to put pressure on the folks that are really causing this problem. And it's very un-American, so thank you for your leadership.
Can I just add to that?
Yes.
Thank you. Echo everything that Councilmember Petasna said. I'm a proud ambassador of the food bank, and one of the things I do is I always go around asking folks to be ambassadors, because I think it's so important when you make something, whatever it is, and share it amongst your community, because that's where your home is, and that's first when it comes to mind of donating money back out or helping a neighbor, a friend, because you never know who needs it, right? It could be your next-door neighbor that's going out there. And I love the food bank because they don't check a lot of the criteria, right? People just go in and grab what they need. And, you know, recently, I actually met with a high schooler who was working on some of the hygiene products, and, you know, it's, again, one of those popular items that, you know, folks, you sometimes get so embedded with things, and you think it's just common things that people have, and they don't. And I was kind of re alerted by the high schooler that these are most popular demanding items that go so fast in the food bank. So it's not just food, it's so much more than that. It's your typical average needs and necessities, right, that you have at home. And I want to thank you, Mr. Smith and his entire staff, for working on all the volunteers that are involved, and all the ambassadors as well for continuing to promote. I think we have to continue doing now even more because of what's happening nationally, and it's impacting right here at home. It's going to impact our friends, our family members, our neighbors, so we have to just somehow figure out how we can do more now. Like I said, if you have $10, it takes only sometimes a minimum of $10 a month to help out, and it makes such a big impact to families in need. So thank you. Just wanted to put it out there.
Thank you. The ambassador program, which I'm a member of too, is a monthly donation that you set up. It's very worthwhile cause, Dr. Karazi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we want to have a vote on the $10,000 before I start?
Oh, that's good. Any other comments on the $10,000? Don't, let's try to keep it, anyone can blame anyone in Washington, that's fine, that's not what this is about. This is about what we can do here. So if anyone has any other comments about this motion, the $10,000. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Barrison?
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Francois?
Absolutely.
Councilman Karazi?
Absolutely.
Mayor Kramer?
Absolutely.
Councilman Oni-Jaka?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilmember Petasna?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Dean?
Hundred percent, yes.
Councilman Vasinella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Normally, I don't allow any flourishing of your vote, but this time it was appropriate. So it passes. Now you can say something.
Thank you. I am...
I am, I usually have a lot to say. I choked up a little bit.
Especially since I told you last night we didn't have any money.
That's right. No, I mean, we, you know, as challenging as this is, and this is challenging, I love what I do. And I have the pleasure of working with a staff that love this work as well. And over 400 volunteers that love this work as well. I feel very blessed and honored. I see it as a privilege to serve this community. I raised my daughters in this community. My wife and I started volunteering at the Food Bank in 2019. My wife is the volunteer coordinator at the Franklin Food Bank. And even though this is, these are some scary times, we are a very resilient and gritty race of humans. As an organization, we're very creative and very resourceful. And even though I think it's going to get deeper and darker for a while, I feel confident that we'll get through this. This country has seen harder times than this. Frankly, the black and brown people that represent the majority of the folks that we have served at the Food Bank for years have seen trials and tribulations worse than this and have found a way to overcome. One thing I know for certain, and that's we are not going to get there if this community doesn't unite. As somebody who lived in New York for many, many years, and some of you may have heard me say this before, the diversity of New York City is beautiful. But New York City is very segregated. If we're not careful, we can suffer the same thing here at Franklin. It is racially and ethnically diverse, but it is not as integrated as it needs to be. And I think each one of us has not only a responsibility, but also an opportunity to bring this community together. And this is one of those topics, to the mayor's point, that has nothing to do with what side of the aisle you sit on, what you name that person or thing that you pray to. It's do you believe that access to healthy nutritious food is a human right or not? And if you believe that it is a human right, then what are you doing to affect change in your household, on your block, in your neighborhood, and in your community? And I continue to be blown away by how this council supports the work of not only the Franklin Food Bank, but so many other organizations in this town.
So hang on. Dr. Karazi has something to say.
You definitely want to see your brother cry tonight. That's, is that what we're doing?
Thank you, thank you. You have heard me often saying that how blessed we are to have Food Bank in our neighborhood. Not every town has it. And we know there are a lot of people that they can't even drive. They walk to places like Food Bank to get their food. And I know for sure that their needs cannot be accomplished unless the community, the houses of worship and businesses and others work as partners to help. So when I saw the article yesterday about the possibility of government shutting down and by November 1st, people may not get their SNAP funds, I started some conversation with mayor. And one of the things that I thought that we should do is to make sure that houses of worship take an active role in this possible crisis. We have 70 houses of worship. That is almost one house of worship for every thousand people that they live in this town. I don't know any other township that they have such a high concentration of houses of worship. So we can do a lot. And in fact, this morning, I called one of my colleagues at the Masjid Ali. This is one of the houses of worship mosque at 47 Surtikrove Lane. And I said, look, we possibly going to have a crisis. Can you help? And Derek, I'm very happy to let you know that I have a check for $5,000 from Masjid Ali. So let me just come down there.
Get a picture.
Someone want to take the picture?
I'll take it.
I will.
Oh, he got it?
Okay.
Anyone else have anything to add or ask Mr. Smith?
So taking Dr. Karazi's lead, I'm going to contact a number of places of worship in town as well. The Hindu temples, this being a Hindu congregation. I'm hoping that I can mobilize some resources for you as well. Derek, and just following on that, the Interface President, Interface Council President was here, but she had to leave. And I will be asking her to have a meeting with the executive committee of the Interface Council in Franklin Township. So she can, hopefully, and that team can play an active role, reach another house of worship and get more money. But Derek, if the government opens, that $5,000, use it towards that big project you have. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I guess in closing, we'll continue to work with you and look for ways we can help to everyone out there. In the Jewish tradition, if you do kindness, it's a mitzvah, a blessing. If you do it without telling anyone, it's a double mitzvah, a double blessing. I'm going to give up one of my mitzvahs to say, I am an ambassador, so I give monthly, but I gave a substantial amount in addition to that when I heard this call. So please, out there, if you can, if you have the means, if you're one of people such as me, who's not being affected directly by what's going on here, it's time to give. And so, again, thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much, council. Thank you so much, Franklin. Love you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to the Township Council for their approval. The regular meeting, work session, regular meeting of June 11th, April 8th, and October 14th. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Seconded.
Within seconded, any discussion? Anyone like to make a correction? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrassan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Vasinella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Approval of the warrants. Warrants in the amount of $18,000, $18 million, I wish. Warrants in the amount of $18,216,389.57 on October 28th, 2025, are presented to Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion on the warrants?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrassan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Vasinella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Now, what some people have been waiting for. Public hearing and adoption of ordinance, second reading. First reading is when we announce it to the world. Second reading is when we listen to your comments and then vote on it. So this is ordinance 4483-25. An ordinance mending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, New Jersey, with the addition of chapter 198, generators to the routine use, to prohibit the routine use of onsite generators powered by fossil fuels, petroleum products, or other combustible materials, is presented for the public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing is now noticed as required. Do I have unanimous consent to open to the public? Without objection, we are now open to the public, the same rules as I stated before.
Good evening, council. This is, I'm Robin Sedam. I live at 54 Gilman's Lane. And I also serve as the vice chairman of your environmental commission. And I wish to speak in strong support of this ordinance. Thank you very much for the initiative. I do have one question. Does this ordinance in any way help us with the Nisi plan in the south part of the township?
No. That's not a generator as a practical matter.
They would only have one for emergency uses, I would guess.
Correct, correct. I think they're required to have one for emergency, I think.
I am not going to remain to hear the vote, because I'm volunteering tonight at the church around the corner for sleeping there with two homeless families. So I'm going to go now, because my husband is covering for me while I've been here tonight. It's a privilege to be able to do that. That's something the county makes available through Home, Inc. And I'm glad to be able to do it. But I thank you very much for bringing this forward. I hope you can vote on this unanimously and send a strong signal to the rest of the state that this is a model for good, healthy living. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of the Town Council, good evening. Eric De Gezero, that is D E capital G E S E R O, Executive Vice President of the Fuel Merchants Association of New Jersey, trade association representing distributors of both heating fuel and motor fuel, as well as HVAC contractors. And on behalf of the New Jersey Propane Gas Association, I am the lobbyist registered of record for both. Two separate questions in my time. When I heard about this ordinance and I heard about generators, I think of the thing when your power doesn't work and that you're outlawing generators. But you certainly are not, even for fossil fuel generators. If you need it in an emergency, the ordinance allows that. But then I questioned the definition of generator. And it says, a generator means any device, engine, turbine, or apparatus that converts fuel or combustible material into electric or mechanical power. Now, on behalf of the businesses I represent, we deal with boilers that produce heat. So this building, the school, any, you know, your house, what have you, any type of either furnace, heat pump, or boiler. But there's another type of boiler that's used in industrial processes. And that is, those are processes where the boiler isn't used to heat the space. It's used in the manufacturing process. And I have very little knowledge of those. But my question is, has this ordinance been looked at through the perspective that boilers, you have lots of life sciences, pharmaceutical, food, flavor and fragrance companies that are headquartered here and operate here? Does this definition of generator capture the mechanical power that they are producing? And therefore, the routine operation of that facility might not be allowed? I do not know. I don't do heat. I only do heat. I don't do process. So that's question one.
So for this, we can have a dialogue if you would like.
The answer is no.
No, yeah.
Second question is, does the, what is the legal authority that the governing body has to enact this ordinance? I'm going to read from the Air Pollution Control Act. The preamble of the ordinance says, whereas the use of onsite generators powered by fossil fuels and other combustible materials contribute to air pollution, greenhouse gas, noise, hazardous waste. So the Air Pollution Control Act at NJSA 262C22 reads, after August 2nd, 1995, no municipality, county, local board of health, local health agency, regional health commission, or any other political subdivision of the state may enact any ordinance pursuant to the Air Pollution Control Act or the County Environmental Health Act or any other authority concerning air pollution, except as provided in subsection B of this section, whether that subject matters expressed by inclusion or exclusion from the act. And part B just deals with municipalities and the fee structure for their ordinances. So second question is, within the context of the state law, is this, is it permissible for this governing body to adopt this ordinance? Thank you.
Mayor, give me that.
Yes, please.
Short answer is yes, of course. You read the first whereas.
Yes.
But you didn't read the second whereas, right? That refers to the public health. And of course, municipalities always routinely regulate the public health, safety, and welfare. They also regulate zoning. They also regulate building occupancy. They also regulate noise, all of which is, you know, within their authority. I don't think anybody would suggest that the purpose of this is so that you don't build a commercial building, for instance, a data center, and decide that you're going to put in a massive generator that produces noise and affects the public health, safety, and welfare and is dangerous. So I think that we, there's all of those bases for the laws, but it's our general power to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. It's not specifically just a, under the health statute, if that's what was your limit. I know you asked me a question that I assume was rhetorical in an email to my paralegal, where you said, I just want to confirm that this ordinance is prohibited by that statute, but it's not.
And just to add to that, this ordinance does not in any way attempt to regulate air quality standards.
Correct.
Which is what your statute is directed at. At one time, municipalities in the state of New Jersey regulated air quality. And the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, through the law that you just read, basically said, municipalities will no longer regulate air quality standards individually, but that the state of New Jersey will establish those standards and all municipalities will regulate them, that the regulations will be even across the state. So what that directly did was just simply unify the state of New Jersey and its air quality standards and didn't leave it up to individual municipalities to establish their own. This doesn't establish any air quality standards.
Right, but it is regulating.
No, it's not. It's regulating the use of power generators to power a facility off grid. That's what it's regulating, by any means, whether they're clean or not, as far as mechanical or combustible. If you power your facility with clean energy, solar, the township has no objection to that, according to this ordinance. It's, but it's not necessarily fossil fuels. It could be burning anything. And Mayor, I can give examples later if you'd like.
No, and the other point of it is that you cannot get a CO for a dwelling, for instance, in New Jersey, without it being hooked up to the electrical grid.
Correct.
You have to have electrical power. There's a reason for that, because there are safety reasons for that. So what this is prohibiting is somebody from having a commercial building that that source of energy is its emergency backup. So when that backup fails, that becomes a safety issue.
And there are municipalities that prohibit the use of whole house generators, either powered via diesel or natural gas, to power a home. So that, you know, that, or those, there are municipalities that have that because of the need to connect to a utility for power.
And not to make this a TED Talk between Mr. Whitelock and I.
But it might turn into that.
And by the way, we also have zoning power too.
We do.
To regulate uses in the town. So I mean, it's all part of our general, as they call it, penumbra of authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Evan Rentezelas, that's R-E-N-T-E-Z-E-L-A-S, and I just have a question about one of the exceptions in the permitted exception section. It's for mobile operations such as refrigerated trucks or food service vehicles, which I'm assuming refers to like food trucks or food carts and the like. And so my question is, is it required that these mobile food service facilities, is it required that they actually move? Because I know that food trucks and food carts consistently are in the same location for long periods of time, maybe weeks or months. So is it a requirement of this ordinance that they actually move, or are they allowed to stay in the same location if they have the ability to move in location?
It's covered under a separate.
This doesn't regulate that, it's a separate ordinance.
We have a separate ordinance for that.
Okay.
It's literally mobile food vendors.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? So seeing no one else, I ask for unanimous consent. Oh.
Whoop, got one.
Got it in.
Who cares at this point? That's Emery's problem.
My name is Walter Quagliano, 304 Cedar Grove Lane, and I guess the question is, we're worried about the diesel engines. Meanwhile, we allow all these warehouses, and all the trucks, and diesel trucks that are with the warehouses, and there's no control over that. Maybe if we think we'd rather put up a data center, and then have them feed some of that energy back into the grid.
They don't.
As opposed to like 5% or 10%, that they have to go over, and there must be clean generation, instead of having all these warehouses and all the trucks that are involved in that. And I see it on Cedar Grove Lane, I've been there for 75 years, and it's quite the thing. So I don't know if there's an answer, but I don't know how well you guys have looked at, you know, I don't mean you guys, but have you really looked into this, that that's the best way to handle this?
Yes.
So first, we do regulate warehouses. In fact, right now in Franklin, there's an ordinance that bans warehouses. So we do, and we regulate hours of operations, we do that also. So there's a lot of stuff we can do. By the way, data centers don't put power back into the grid, they only take power out of the grid. So.
Well, if you had, you know, when they built it, that they would be forced to overbuild with clean energy, or a better way of doing it, so that they could re-put back 5% or 10% back into our grid, maybe we'll get our electricity down.
If they're using clean energy, they can do whatever they want.
Well, not clean, you know, a cleaned up, the amount of fossil.
I don't think, the answer is.
Natural gas is minimal, I'm sure.
No, Mr. Potasnik, you can answer somewhat clean energy.
No, I don't think, not the clean energy question.
Well, not clean energy, but the amount of CO2 from the newer generator.
The answer is, is I don't think state regulations would allow you to overbuild a generator to run a data center so that you could put 10% of your power back into the system. That's just, you know, I'm a lawyer, my father was an electrical engineer, but I don't think that that's how it works.
Okay.
That's my non-technical answer.
It's an interesting idea. I think you're saying cleaner, not clean. This ordinance, the way it's set up, does allow for clean energy under a strict definition that doesn't have pollution, not less pollution, which makes it cleaner. So I think there's a little bit of a word salad there, but they would be allowed to produce their own energy if it's clean, so you would think like solar, which does not have.
Water, some kind of.
Correct. Whether they could produce more and put it into the grid is not an issue for this council. It would really be something for the state and state law, which does not allow you to produce more energy than you use. So, but it's a novel idea, and I've heard that talked about, that if all of us could be small energy producers, I could produce energy or electricity for my neighbor if I could put a larger array, but currently that's not legal. But it's not up to this council, we don't have the authority.
Okay, I guess you kind of answered it, we'll see what, we'll move closer. But with the warehouse.
If you're going to speak.
We really have to do something with that. With the warehouse, we really have to do something with the diesel, with all the tractor trailers.
Yeah, that's not, we're on an ordinance, has nothing to do with that, right.
Right, but somewhere along the line, I think we have to look at that.
We hear you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one come forward to ask for unanimous consent to close public portion. Seeing none, public portion is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Some moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just wanted to, if I remember right, although I think the fellow left, there was a question about enforcement. Is that correct? Was he referring to that ordinance earlier?
Yes.
Okay, so although he's not here, I would still like whoever to address that question.
The answer is you can't get a CO if you don't have, if you're not hooked to the grid, so it's pretty simple.
Okay. For the gentleman who was here.
Yeah, I didn't think that was much question.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
Right, and by the way, you can't install a generator without having an electric.
Construction permit, right. The whole permit process, yeah.
And if somebody saw one, they'd call, and are zoning, and we would go.
And you couldn't build a facility without building permits and.
If you could build a facility that has generators, if we lose power, we don't want it to be down for even a second, so we have these generators here just for that, and then they cheat, and they use them, which would be financially stupid, because it'd be cheaper to get it off the grid than make it yourself.
Not necessarily.
Well, no.
That's today's math, but it could change. Especially peak hours.
That's true.
Emery, could you give me the screen for a second?
They do time of use, large energy providers, and can change. So they might turn it on when it's really expensive and make their own, and turn it off, and then you're choking. Cancer, asthma, heart disease.
See if it pops.
And just for the enforcement aspect, that's also applicable to residential, correct, with this ordinance, that if somebody's trying to.
Hit the button.
Power their home from a generator, they're not allowed to.
That's not my screen.
Unless it's an emergency, correct, Mr. Reno?
Correct.
Okay, and that would be enforced by someone informing our town, and our town would look into it.
Let me try again. Now that you turn.
So I think we covered any of mine, putting out for the gentleman who had left. Thank you. Question?
Not working, that's okay.
I don't know what's happening.
It's not that big of a deal. That's fine.
Any other comments?
I just want to thank you again, Mayor, for your leadership on this. I think the foresight that you have is spectacular. I know that the township manager and our attorney worked very hard at different revisions of it, and I think the presence of a lobbyist from the fossil fuel merchants, one of the largest oil and gas spending entities in the state, being here really shows our leadership, the tip of the spear, and the contagiousness with communities may want to protect themselves from what we're seeing in the AI boom, and I would encourage them to do that. I think the residents would be pleased, as I'm sure ours will be as well when this goes into effect, so thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Mr. Vince Dominic also contributed a lot to this, and thank you, sir, you're a gentleman. He came up at the beginning of the meeting and asked me when the proper time to speak was. My comments on this was that this is the next warehouse thing waiting to happen, and this time at least, we're ahead of it. So I obviously am in favor of it. Any other?
I just, for one, Walter, we've known each other for a long time. What I would suggest you do is go on the computer and Google AI data centers, and look, there's a number of articles and videos on it. It will be chilling for you to see what, and the mayor said this is the next thing to come, this is the next thing after warehouses. It is huge, all right? My son lives up in Carbon County, Pennsylvania, 90 miles from here. In a little town called Nesquahoning, a Bitcoin mining company purchased a former coal power plant, has now applied to the state of Pennsylvania for the right to burn tires to supplement the coal to power just nothing but that bit mining operation. And just down the road in Penn Forest Township, an AI data center is looking to purchase 700 acres of property that's not on city water and will drill wells for cooling, and it has insufficient power from the grid to supply the facility, so who knows how they're going to power it, and that's 90 miles away. Look, just do yourself a favor and just look it up and see what we're talking about here.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to add, Mayor, so happy that we're doing this. Just looking back in 2020 and going through the warehouse ordinance and et cetera and everything, and the fact that we have done this proactive measure, the council and the staff, and thank you so much to Mr. Warlock and the whole team for looking into this and making sure that this does not happen in New Jersey, well, in Franklin, we're hoping that we can gather around the other neighboring towns, but, you know, this is very important, and this is the magnitude, like what Mr. Warlock said, is extremely big, very impactful to our environment, to the residents, and want to make sure that we indicate, we don't always get their credit for things like this, so I want to make sure that I give my thanks to our staff, and Mayor, and the team that's been in this council for, again, being proactive measure on making sure that we're keeping Franklin safe and environmental friendly as much as we can, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the other thing I wanted to add to that, it's not just AI, it's data warehousing, period.
Right, but just for the lawyers, this ordinance is written, it doesn't matter how you're using it.
Mm-hmm.
We're not singling out AI.
Right.
I'm going to take a leap here and ask for a roll call.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Carrasi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine. Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Thank you all. Ordinance in introduction and first reading, ordinance number 4484-25, an ordinance releasing, extinguishing, and vacating the rights of the public to a portion of a street known as Executive Drive in the township of Franklin County of Somerset, state of New Jersey. The foregoing ordinances presented to the township council for adoption in first reading, posting, and publication, accordance with law, and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the township council to be held on Tuesday, November 25, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Some moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Carrasi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella. Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Consent agenda. The items A through Q, as listed in the consent agenda portion of this meeting, are presented to the township council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item, or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution.
Just to write your mic.
Your mic. It's on.
Okay.
Resolution 25464, resolution of the township of Franklin County of Somerset, New Jersey, designated properties identified as Block 233, lots 1.01 and 2.01, and Block 234, lots 1, 14.01, and 16 on the tax map of Franklin Township as an area of redevelopment with condemnation powers. I would like to abstain from that particular resolution, so I want to back off on that.
We should hold it for a separate vote then.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
We'll hold it for a separate, take it off the consent agenda, we'll hold it for a separate vote, and you can have a think.
Okay. And Resolution 25463, the grant application for mentoring for youth affected by the opioid and substance use, that is indeed a good program. We're going for the grant, which is definitely in need, so I just want to pull that out so that people can see that we are concerned about our residents, our youth, and this is something that we could use for that and to that end.
Anyone else?
Mayor, if you can just clarify the first one, 25-446, what we're trying to do with the pipelines.
The park that lands in Castleton Park.
Yes.
There's, they want, the company wants to change the valves on a pipeline, and they need an easement in order to do that. These valves become automatic. It's a safety issue to me. They can, not automatic, remote. So if there was a gas leak in the pipes farther downstream, rather than someone at headquarters saying, "Go get out there and shut it off," they can just shut it off. I hate to, I hate to help fossil fuels in any way, but safety is paramount, so.
I think it's important to note that this is an existing pipeline, it hasn't existed in that right of way, in one form or another, since about 1938, and it runs pretty much north to south through the township, exiting down in the southern end of the town in Little Rocky Hill, coming in across the river. The current valves are in a flood plain on the other side of the guardrail on Easton Avenue across from the park, in a very dangerous location to access, and impossible to access during flood conditions, and this is moving the valves to the safer side of Easton Avenue on the pipeline, which is where, obviously, where valves need to be, and making them, as the mayor said, remotely activated so that in an emergency, it can immediately be turned off, as opposed to currently where an employee of the pipeline company has to respond to the location to do so.
And they're paying us to do this?
And they are paying us to do it at 10 times the value of these, about $155,000, give or take the dollar.
Which goes to open space.
Which goes to open space and the acquisition of, obviously, a much larger piece of land than the .14 acres that we're talking about for this increase in the easements.
Madam Clerk, on items A through P.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Carrasi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Item Q, Resolution 25-464, as read by Councilman Wright. Do we have a motion on that resolution?
Some moved, seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Your vote on Q, from the last consent agenda.
Yes. Councilman Carrasi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Resolution 25-466, authorizing the formation of the Municipal Alliance Opiate Funds Advisory Ms. Francois, do you want to make a motion?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Wright, I just wanted to make sure that they do.
Item P was attached to item A. Am I correct with that? No? Something different?
Yeah.
Okay.
Something different.
Oh, I am P.
So there's the funding, yeah.
To the bill on separately, yes.
Yeah.
Well, that Subcommittee would be administering, providing advisory to the.
Right, so, yeah, so it would be the same.
Absolutely, for that grant.
Yes.
Okay.
I was about to say no, I was like, wait a minute.
So we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Everson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petasnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
All business, 2025 boards, commissions, committees, and vacancies. Anyone have any nominations? Hearing none. Resolution 25465, authorizing the executive session personnel matter is presented to the Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the executive session?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Everson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petasnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
At this time, council is going to go into executive session, there'll be no action taken afterwards, except to come out of executive session and to adjourn the meeting, so taping will stop at this time.